Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for November 12th, 2021. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Christine Arlt, the principal, who will introduce the Central Valley students that will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Good evening and welcome. At this time, I would please ask for Kevin Gin and Noah Espina to join us. And you guys are so fast and speedy. I didn't even see you come up.
Yep.
Awesome, guys. Are we ready?
Yeah.
March, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Noah and Kevin. And this evening, board members, if you wouldn't mind indulging us for a few moments, we are thrilled and honored to have the Board of Education meeting here tonight, especially as we get to start off our season of attitude of gratitude, and we get to do that with the board. And a small way of us to be able to thank all of you for everything that you do for us, we thought it would be nice just to highlight some of the arts. You'll have some wreaths that you will see hanging for you, made by our teacher, Mrs. Kelly, and some of our students. And this evening, we would like to highlight and introduce to you some of our students from our 4th grade band, our 5th, 4th and 5th grade orchestras, and chorus, who will be performing for you this evening as a way of expressing our gratitude. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mrs. Jeanette Russell, who is the director of our chorus. But before that, if I could ask you to please, we'll cut the yellow ribbons for you so you can join us in the audience.
Is it possible that once we're done, we turn one of the speakers because it's very difficult for us to hear?
Yeah, we're, we'll go down, sit down.
We're going down there?
I couldn't either. I didn't want to, I didn't want to interrupt her.
Behind me are members of our 4th grade chorus, a select, a small select group, and we would like to sing for you this evening a patriotic piece entitled "This Is My Country."
This is my country, land of my birth. This is my country, grandest on earth. I pledge my allegiance, America the home. For this is my country, to have and to hold. This is my country, land of my choice. This is my country, hear my proud voice. I pledge my allegiance, America the home. For this is my country, to have and to hold.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle George. grade orchestra. We prepared this piece just for tonight, and this is the first time they have ever performed for an audience. So, we're very excited.
I am a lead band teacher here at Central Valley. With me are a select group of 5th grade band members. We will be performing for you a familiar tune called "Bitter Street," an appropriate And much like the 5th grade orchestra, this is our very first time performing on stage for you guys, so I hope you enjoy.
I'm Mitchell Lynn. I am a lead band teacher here at Central Valley. With me are a select group of 5th grade band members. We will be performing for you a familiar tune called "Bitter Street," an appropriate tenor, starting off in C major. And much like the 5th grade orchestra, this is our very first time performing on stage for you guys, so I hope you enjoy.
And again, we just wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude to the Board of Education and for all that you do and your continued support of all of our children, our families, and our community. So, thank you very much, and thank you for being here this evening.
I couldn't, we couldn't hear when she was speaking. Thank you very much to all the students for their pledge to the flag and for their amazing performances. We really appreciate it. Before we continue on with the evening, I just want to go ahead and give a couple of points of business. Mr. Don Beeler is not joining us this evening, and I will go ahead now with item number three, the reading of our mission statement. "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens." May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Rodriguez for recognition of the 2020 recipients of the Mid-Hudson School Study Council Awards for Excellence.
Thank you, Mrs. McCleary.
Can you hear me? Can you hear?
Yes, this is better.
Okay. The Mid-Hudson Study Council is comprised of school districts among seven counties in the Mid-Hudson region. Every school year, we celebrate the Mid-Hudson Study Council Awards for Excellence. Due to COVID, they had canceled the awards for the past two years. So, this year, we've decided to honor them at our BOE meetings. Honorees were selected from a long list of nominations. This year, we are proud to recognize two members of the Monroe Woodbury community as the recipients of the 2020 Award for Excellence. Our first honoree recipient is Chris DiLorenzo, who's receiving this award for excellence in the area of school board service. Speaking on behalf of Mr. DiLorenzo is Lori Hock.
I'm going to simply read the letter that I wrote in support of Chris's nomination as the recipient of this award. "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in support of Christopher DiLorenzo's nomination for the Mid-Hudson School Study Council School Board Service Award. As our district's director of athletics, I have had the fortunate opportunity to work with Chris very closely over the last few years. In his role as a board member, Mr. DiLorenzo has been instrumental in leading our district through several major projects and undertakings. The improvements in our district under his leadership are nothing short of remarkable. His work in leading the policy committee and facilities committee has inspired our district in many ways. This past year, our district completed a capital project that involved the construction of three new turf fields on our main campus. During this project, Mr. DiLorenzo was involved in every phase of our planning. As a matter of fact, it was he who initially suggested a need for athletic facility upgrades." I supported that. "I can emphatically state that this project would not have been possible if not for his persistence. As the year-long project progressed, Chris played an integral role in overseeing the work and fostered collaboration among various departments in the district to ensure a successful completion. His work ethic and attention to detail were evident in every step of the way. I have admired his knowledge base and his passion for athletics, and have learned a great deal from him during our work on the capital project. What I appreciate most about Chris DiLorenzo is his ability to simultaneously scrutinize and support. He holds district personnel to high standards but supports them in achieving all tasks. He is a natural leader who truly cares about our students, our district, and our community as a whole. For these reasons, I believe Chris is a deserving candidate for this award. I think we can all agree that serving as a board member is a thankless volunteer position. When you have board members who are willing to roll up their sleeves and get things done the way Chris has, they should be celebrated. He has made our district a better place, and for years to come, our students will reap the benefits of his work. Thank you."
As soon as Mr. DiLorenzo gets here, we will give him his award. Our next recipient is Mary Grace Bouye. Speaking on her behalf is going to be Dr. Vias.
My name is Bargav Vias. So, here is the letter that I wrote on behalf of Mary Grace. Dear Nomination Committee, I'm writing this letter to nominate Mary Grace Bouye for the 2020 Awards for Excellence in Pubile Personnel Services. She's a fabulous employee, a huge asset to our school district, and is so deserving for this award and recognition. Let me tell you a little bit about Mary Grace. Mary Grace is a computer maintenance specialist in the technology department. She is directly responsible for the district's student management system. She works very closely with all the schools to maintain records, set student schedules, and communicate with the families, including some of times that you got a call in the 4:30 in the morning, there's no calls. She is responsible for maintaining Google applications for education for about 6,600-plus students and 1,300 employees, as well as the inventory control system for 16,000-plus devices in the district. In my five years here, the experience with the school district, Mary Grace's knowledge of student management system and Google apps for education is unparalleled. She's a walking encyclopedia of knowledge of the, her knowledge of student information system, and she loves to share her knowledge with anyone who will listen. In the past school year, this is, again, this is right after COVID, in the past school year, she, her knowledge and experience have been invaluable as we face school closure in March and the need of one-to-one device distribution throughout the school district for our students. Mary Grace created innovative solutions that allowed us to distribute these devices in a safe and a secure and a quick manner. To say that Mary Grace is tenacious and dedicated is an understatement. When pressured with the problem or challenge, she would work nonstop to find the best solution, whether it's the middle of the night or early in the morning. She is able to combine her knowledge of the student management system with her experience in the school district to create the new ways of doing the things that has improved the street and streamlined the operations and improved the efficiency of the systems. Earlier this year, Mary Grace asked if she could be a part of the best practices handbook to maintain 6,600-plus student Chromebooks. She jumped at the chance to do the research, and her efforts not only has benefited the entire department in the district, but also has set an example and inspire her coworkers to stay proactive in the job responsibilities. Although Mary Grace does not have the official designation in the, as a supervisor in her title, she has proven herself to be the go-to person for all the technology department team members and support staff. She regularly volunteers to mentor summer interns and has taught the classes for the staff members and parents to help them in various aspects of the student management system. It is with a great pleasure that I respectfully submit this nomination for Mary Grace for 2020 Awards for Excellence in Pubile Personnel Service. Mary Grace, congratulations.
And then there's pictures outside as well.
We now have a presentation of the external audit report for the 2020-2021 school year, which will be given to us by our external auditor, Brent Napoleon of Nugent &amp; Hausler.
My pleasure to be here tonight to present the audit report that our firm produced for the district's financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2021. I believe you all have a copy of the report in front of you, it was distributed before. And we've gone through this report with your audit committee in great detail. Tonight, I'm really here to give you sort of a general overview of the district's finances and results of our audit. So, on page one of the report is our audit report. It's an unmodified opinion. There are, there are a few other reports in, in the financial statements that are also unmodified opinions. That means that, in our opinion, the financial statements are free of material misstatement. That's really what you pay us to do, to come in and give you these opinions. So, so that's, that's found on page one for the financial statements. After the audit report, there's management's discussion and analysis. That includes sort of an overview of, of the financial information for the district and also some of, you know, management's thoughts, you know, things that they wanted to highlight. So, we'll touch on the things in that in the actual financial statements, but that's there for, you know, for anyone to read if, if they'd like. So, how did the year go? That's what we really want to know, right? So, page 21 shows the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. The, the district for the year ended June 30, 2021, overall, for the entire district, the total of the governmental funds, excess of revenues over expenditures, roughly $2.5 million. The general fund had a, a net increase in fund balance of about $4 million. Primary reasons for that include the, the district receiving a refund from their health insurance plan, about $2.2 million, and also receiving federal funding as part of the CARES Act, which was about $1.2 million. These are kind of one-off, you know, things that you certainly can't count on again next year. So, the, that $4 million includes a, you know, a couple of, you know, fairly significant items there. So, those are things I'd highlight in the general fund. The, the school lunch fund, sort of in the middle of the page there, excess of expenditures over revenue, about $250,000. The school lunch fund, in order to avoid having a negative fund balance, received some funding from the general fund, which is not uncommon during times when the school lunch fund's performance isn't, you know, where it kind of can't sustain itself. And obviously, you know, the, the main reason for that, the, the school lunch fund could not serve as many meals when the, you know, there are fewer students in attendance live and in person. So, traditionally, at this district, your school lunch fund has a little more revenue than expense, and my understanding is the district expects that it'll, you know, it'll get right back to that. Hopefully, in this fiscal year, when obviously you have more students, you know, attending in person and, you know, receiving their meals, you know, right there at the district. The, the capital projects fund includes about $4 million that was borrowed to fund the turf and HVAC project that was mentioned earlier. The projects in the capital projects fund expenditure-wise are essentially complete. We're, soon, the, the district expects to receive the funding for the Smart Schools Bond Act project, but otherwise, the, the capital project fund, the, like I say, the, the projects are essentially done. The, the district also, in the debt service fund, there was a refunding, or what most of us would think of as like a refinancing of, of some debt this year, about $2 million. That saves the taxpayers some interest on those borrowings. So, that's, you know, the most significant thing that happened during the year in the debt service fund. Any questions on the results of operations in the fund? I'd be happy to take them. All right, then, if we back up to page 19 on the fund financial statements, that page kind of shows us where do we stand as of the end of the fiscal year. So, I'll kind of go fund by fund, and the general fund, as I mentioned, In the general fund, as I mentioned, the, the fund balance increased about four million dollars. The fund balance that is subject to the 4% tax limit, the district is in compliance with that law. The, the amount that's subject to that limit is, is under that, that, you know, that ceiling that, that they provide. So always good to, to, to be in compliance with that law. It's not to be taken for granted. Some schools do exceed it, and some exceed it regularly. So it's to your credit that you're, you know, you as a district, historically, you really have held to trying to, to stick to that law. You, you approved increases to reserves, net about 6.6 million dollars during the year. That's very important for maintaining a strong school district financially and, you know, having funds available to, you know, weather the storm, you know, who knows what that might be? I guess we learned here recently, we never know what's coming. So it's always good to, to know that, you know, that fund balance is there when unexpected things happen. So again, to your credit, you're strengthening the financial position of the district by increasing reserves. The school lunch fund, as I mentioned, there's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of fund balance that really relates to the inventory, but there's no unassigned fund balance because, you know, the school lunch fund did struggle this year. But again, hopefully that, you know, that rebounds here in the next fiscal year. The capital projects fund shows a negative fund balance, about 4.2 million dollars, really more of a accounting thing than anything else. Can't recognize the revenue related to the Smart Schools Bond Act project until it's available. So there's some revenue that, you know, that again will come in when all the paperwork is filed and the state approves those payments. So not a cause for concern there when you see that negative fund balance. It's, you know, that aid is coming, we, the school district is, is fine there. And there's also about two million dollars of fund balance in the debt service fund, which over the next five years or so, I think the district plans to use that money to, you know, to, to, to fund the debt payments that are, that are upcoming, you know, on the, the bonds that the district has outstanding. So those are your fund financial statements. Also in the audit report, a couple pages back, we've got the government-wide financial statements. You're, you're basically required to report your finances on two different bases of accounting, and that will be, the other presentation includes long-term assets and liabilities on your balance sheet. The two biggest things that really impact your results of operations and balance sheet there, I would say, are the district's share of the pension funds that the state has. You're in a state where the pensions are funded very well, so liability-wise, it's, you know, you're, you're good there, but the, the other post-employment benefits is the larger liability, and every school district has this. It's a significant liability because it's required to be recognized as people are earning their post-retirement health benefits. So that's a, a very significant liability, you know, it's required to be estimated using actuaries and things. So that's also included in the government-wide financial statements. But those financial statements, like I say, precede these, these fund statements. So that's the, that's the general results of the, the operations of the school for the year. We also issue a management letter that would include any comments that we had about issues with internal controls, things of that nature. That report is clean this year. So again, you know, credit to, to you and your staff, your management, you know, the, the business office, everyone involved there that, you know, things went very well with the audit this year. Any questions that you have for me about the financials? Obviously, there's pages and pages of footnote disclosures. Again, we went through the financials in detail with your audit committee, so I don't want to spend too much time on that stuff, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any specific questions? I, I will just note that the audit committee did meet privately. I say privately, it's a public meeting, but we have already met with the auditor, so a lot of this was explained in detail to the audit committee. So I do know that we had some questions that we had asked and answered there, but I don't know if there's any other board members that had any additional questions from that, or any follow-up from the audit members?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate you, you know, having us do, you know, perform the audit for you and look forward to seeing you again next year.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our school board recognition.
So I want to begin by saying a big thank you to our young audience who sat through an audit report. You were awesome. You were attentive, and I am so appreciative of that. So with that, I just want to speak a little bit about what today, what this, what today is. Every year, we celebrate School Board Recognition Week. The members of our Board of Education are unpaid volunteers who spent countless hours helping to oversee the operations of our school district. And so I will begin with reading the proclamation from our governor. Let me put my glasses on. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than seven hundred school boards in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society of an ever-changing world. And whereas throughout more than a year of the COVID-19 pandemic, school boards have worked with school administrators and educators to help them navigate the unprecedented challenges, restrictions, and desperate effects of health crisis on our children's learning. And whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours to, of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by closely working with parents, educational professionals, and other community members. And whereas the members of the New York State Local School Boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure that, that the solid foundation of school systems in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during the week of October 18th through the 22nd, special activities and programs will be held in community across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in the acknowledgement, the commitment, and contributions of the members of the local school board. Now therefore, I, Kathy Hochul, Governor of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 18, 2020, 2021 as School Board Recognition Week. So thank you. I, we always pick up a gift that we, as a, as a cabinet, present our board. So there's a little box in front of every board member, and I just want to say, this year, we are presenting the Board of Education with a planter and a plant box with this year's logo, "Together is a Great Way to Grow." We chose this gift as a token of our appreciation for the board's unwavering commitment to grow, to the growth of our students and our school community. So if you want to take a look at it, there are real-life plants, and hopefully they have made it all the way to this building. And again, they are our new district logo. Every year, we have a logo, and this year's logo is "Together is a Great Way to Grow." And it has a little, little bottom to it.
It's maintenance-free, right?
It's not maintenance-free.
For those of us that do not have a green thumb.
There's another piece to it at the bottom.
So nice.
And so you need to water it, much like what you do for our district.
Oh, God.
Help order us to help us grow. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hausler, who will do the second portion.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez. Up next to recognize our Board of Education is our PTA Council, and here representing the PTA Council is Shannon Chambers. I saw her here. I think Mrs. Chambers is bringing up some familiar faces with her.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Chambers. I am the current Secretary of the Monroe Woodbury PTA Council. I'm filling in for Bernie Vega, who is quarantining tonight, so that's a little bit of the disorganization here. On behalf of the Monroe Woodbury PTA Council, we want to thank you for all the time you have gifted our Monroe Woodbury families. To say these past months and years have been difficult for those in education is an understatement. However, the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education members, volunteers, you all continue to show up like there was a direct deposit hitting your account biweekly. At times, you have been applauded and then immediately criticized during a period of ongoing uncertainty for all of us. Yet you continue to show up, knowing you can do your best and still not make everyone happy. The conversations and decision-making have not been easy. They've been around equity, inclusion, social-emotional learning, safety, access, rigorous academics, trauma, social justice, representation, professional development. All of those conversations, goal planning, and meeting need to be recognized and thanked. So tonight, we thank you for the continuous work that affects the education of all Monroe Woodbury children and for supporting safe spaces for brave conversations to occur in our community. Please enjoy the following book reading and the mugs made with love by Monroe Woodbury High School student Jillian Devine. We also donate the Choose Love Formula Frame for all ten Monroe Woodbury buildings on your behalf. And all the board members woke up to a surprise flamingo flock, and the proceeds will be donated to the All Night Grad Party of 2022. And then you're going to see some familiar faces. We are going to read from the book, "Thank You, Ammu." So if we could...
Thank you, Ammu. On the corner of First Street and Long Street, on the very top floor, Ammu was cooking a thick red stew in a big fat pot for a nice evening meal. She seasoned and stirred it and took a small taste. "What a delicious stew," Ammu said. "Tonight's dinner will surely be the best I've ever had."
With that, Ammu put down her spoon and went to read a book before supper. As the thick red stew simmered on the stove, its scrumptious scent wafted out the window and out the door, down the hall, toward the street, and around the block, until, knock. Someone is at the door. When Ammu opened it, she saw a little boy. "Little boy," Ammu exclaimed. "What brings you to my home? Thick red stew."
"I was playing with my, I race car down the hall when I smelled the most delicious smell," the little boy replied. "What is it?" "Mmm, stew," he sighed. "That sound, sure sounds yummy."
Ammu thought for a moment. She was saving her stew for dinner, but she had made quite a bit. It would not hurt to share. "Would you like some?" The little boy nodded. And so Ammu spooned out some thick red stew from the big fat pot for her nice evening meal. "Thank you, Ammu," the little boy said, and went on his way. With that, Ammu closed the door and went back to her book. As she read, her thick red stew's scrumptious scent wafted out the window and out the door, down the hall, toward the street, and around the block, until...
Knock, knock. Someone was at the door. When Ammu opened the door, this time she saw a police officer. "Miss Police Officer," Ammu exclaimed. "What brings you to my home?" "I was on duty down the street when I smelled the most delicious smell," Miss Police Officer replied. "What is it?" "Thick red stew." "Ah, stew," she said, and her mouth watered. "That sounds mighty tasty."
Ammu thought for a moment. There is still enough to share. "Would you like some?" The police officer nodded. Once again, Ammu spooned out some thick red stew from the big fat pot for a nice evening meal. "Thank you, Ammu," the officer said, and went on her way. And so, for the second time, Ammu closed the door and went back to her book. Sure enough, as she read, her thick red stew's scrumptious scent wafted out the window and out the door, down the hall, toward the street, and around the block, until, knock, knock, knock. Again, someone was at Ammu's door. This time, when she opened it, she saw... A hot dog vendor. "Mr. Hot Dog Vendor," Ammu exclaimed. "What brings you to my home?" "I was selling my hot dogs down the block when I smelled the most delicious smell," Mr. Hot Dog Vendor replied. "What is it?" "Thick red stew." "Oh, stew," the vendor licked his lips. "That sounds quite delectable." So Ammu spooned out some thick red stew from the big fat pot for her nice evening meal. "Thank you, Ammu," the hot dog vendor said, and went on his way.
Throughout the day, people from all across the neighborhood knocked on Ammu's door. She felt, she fed a shop owner, a cab driver, a doctor, an actor, a lawyer, a dancer, a baker, an artist, a singer, an athlete, a bus driver, a construction worker, even the mayor stopped by. And each time they knocked, Ammu shared. Soon the sky darkened, the streetlights brightened, and it was finally time for dinner. But when Ammu opened her big fat pot of thick red stew for her nice evening meal, it was empty.
Ammu sniffled. "There goes the best dinner I ever had." Sorry and blue, she sat at the table with her empty pot until, knock, 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 knock. "Who could that be?" Ammu wondered. When she opened her door, she saw the little boy, the police officer, the hot dog vendor, the shop owner, the cab driver, the doctor, the actor, the lawyer, the dancer, the baker, why everyone she fed today was at her door. "I'm sorry, everyone," Ammu sighed. "My thick red stew is all gone. I have nothing left to share." The little boy tugged at Ammu's sleeve. "Don't worry, Ammu. We are not here to ask. We are here to give."
The police officer carried in a fresh salad. The mayor entered with a roast chicken. The baker brought a collection of sweet goodies. Even the little boy presented Ammu with... Even the little boy presented Ammu with something special in a shiny red envelope. Everyone who had knocked on Ammu's door that day squeezed inside her tiny apartment, and together they ate, danced, and celebrated. While Ammu's big fat pot of thick red stew was empty, her heart was full of happiness and love. The dinner was the best she had ever had. Thank you, Ammu, and thank you, Board of Education.
Thank you guys so much. And for the audience that might not know, the majority of the kids that are up here are some of the board members' children. So thank you so much for coordinating that. That was really great. Thank you. Oh, yes. Kids, come up to take a photo with your parents. I'm sorry. You guys can be honorary board members for the evening. Michael, come around this side. They're so cute. Yeah, maybe you guys go over there. Maybe that's easier. Aw, so cute.
Oh, my God. You guys stand. No, no, you guys stand. You stand there. You stay there. Can I get you guys over here?
I'm sorry. She wants us to go in the front so they can't see us through our plexiglass. We're making it difficult. Sorry. We're going to go around the front.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry, guys. They want us in the front because they can't see through the glass.
Oh, that's it. Oh, that's you, Evan. It was too funny. I kept telling that kid, "That's your dad." He's like, "That's not my dad."
Thank God you don't send him home on the bus.
Yeah, that's true. And we're going to take a recess, right? We're taking... Oh, no, we're not. We still have more.
This summer, the Reeds Across America organization reached out to us to inquire about an opportunity to partner with the school district. Reeds Across America is a non-for-profit organization that lays memorial wreaths on veterans' graves across the country. Each year, they lay wreaths on hundreds of thousands of graves in Arlington National Cemetery, as well as hundreds of thousands of others across the country. The reason why they reached out to us is because December 18th is National Reef Laying Day, and the Reeds Across America Tractor Trailer Convoy will be passing through Monroe Woodbury on December 14th on its way from its facility in Harrington, Maine to Arlington National Cemetery in Washington, DC. We will be hosting a welcome event, a welcoming ceremony for the convoy on the afternoon of December 14th, and we would like to invite the board to attend the ceremony as we celebrate the work of this organization and, more importantly, to recognize the service of our veterans. Additional information will be forthcoming to the community about this event. On December 18th, there will be reef-laying ceremonies across the country, including one at the Cemetery of the Highlands, which is right here in Highland Mills, which has 755 veteran graves. In acknowledgement of the board's service, each school has randomly selected a Board of Education member and purchased a wreath to be laid at the Cemetery of the Highlands on December 18th. In addition, they have selected a veteran of the Armed Forces to honor with their wreath. And I will now call up individually the schools... I will now call up representatives from the schools to individually speak more about their selections. First up is the Assistant Principal from Smith Clover, Nicole Cook.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Nikki Cook, and I am the Assistant Principal of Smith Clover, as Dr. Hessler has already said, but it's on my phone, so I'm saying it. On behalf of Mr. Berger and the entire Smith Clover community, we are happy to present a bag of some of our Smith Clover items, as we're affectionately called, to Suzanne Donahue. Her grandson was actually up here and was a former Smith Clover, so we're really happy to present some of our favorite items. This evening, and when the wreaths are laid, we are remembering John Burke. We are honoring his service to his country, our country, by sponsoring a wreath that will be placed on his grave through Wreaths Across America. Mr. Burke was actually the father of one of our reading teachers, esteemed reading teacher, Adrian Fuchs. And it is for us a meaningful tribute to his service. And we thank the entire Board of Education for everything that you do throughout the entire year to support us and the entire Monroe Woodbury community. Thank you.
Next up to speak on behalf of Sapphire Elementary is the Principal Caitlin Caldwell.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, guests, welcome. It is my pleasure to speak to you on behalf of Sapphire Elementary School, and we are excited to honor our former PTA president, parent of four Sapphire alum and current board president Stacy McLeary this year. Mrs. McLeary has always brought joy to Sapphire in whatever capacity, and we are grateful for her support and the support of the entire board, especially during the past few years, which have been unimaginable, but we've gotten through them. So I am excited to present this to you. Some more Sapphire swag for your collection. Thank you, Mrs. McLeary, for everything. The donation and wreath being laid at the Veterans Ceremony at the Cemetery of the Highlands will be done in honor of James Horn, Jim Horn, who is a living veteran and a Monroe Woodbury Central School District retiree who recently retired from Monroe Woodbury and from Sapphire. He was the custodian at Sapphire for many, many years, is beloved. We miss him. He's enjoying his retirement with his wife, Jane, in Florida, and we hope he comes back and visits us. But we are very, very honored for his service to our country and also to our community. So in honor of our board and in honor of Mr. Horn, we will be donating and having a wreath laid in his honor.
And up next, representing North Maine, is the Principal, Mr. Coto. And Mr. Davis. And a helper.
Good evening. We are here tonight to celebrate the work of the Monroe Woodbury... I feel like I'm talking backwards here. I'm sorry. I'm going to move this a little bit. Look at that. We are here tonight to celebrate the work of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. North Maine has the honor of recognizing the work of Board Member Michael Suriello. To make the night's presentation, I would like to introduce Juliette Tuccarello. Juliette is a fifth grader here at North Maine. Her father, Sergeant Anthony Tuccarello. Sergeant Tuccarello? For whom Mrs. Suriello is honoring with a wreath across America. Juliette?
Tonight, we are showing our appreciation to the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education. North Maine has the privilege of recognizing in particular Mr. Suriello. We have purchased a wreath in Michael Suriello's name to honor the military service my father, Anthony Tuccarello, has made for his country. Volunteers are the unrecognized heroes of our country. Thank you for all we do. Since we are honoring the unsung heroes in our lives, in our lives, I would like to read a short poem written by my great-grandfather Carmine Tuccarello upon returning home from World War II. A copy of this poem, along with the North Maine fleece, are gifts from North Maine to Mr. Suriello. "The World I Want" by Carmine Tuccarello. "It must be simple. It must be free. It must be peace-loving to satisfy me. It must not be tyrants as we have today, for it must be as pure as a summer's fresh hay. No more bombs, no more guns, no more blood being spilled from the mother's sons. No more having to kiss your children away, for when they come back, they'll be home to stay. No more spending your holidays, and more, no more, wishing he was home instead of at war. A peaceful world need not have wars, for if it does, what are we fighting for? There should be no war. It's a foolish thing. Horror and death is all we bring. And what does anyone gain from it? Not a damn thing, not a single thing. So all of it is a waste of time. You lose your loved ones, yours and mine. I prefer a peaceful world, where you don't have to say, 'God protect him,' so you may live another day.' This is the world that I'm looking for, not just me, but many more. If it's simple, if it's free, if it's peace-loving, it'll satisfy me."
Thank you, Juliette.
Our next school is Pine Tree, and here representing Pine Tree is the Principal, Mr. Brian Judice.
All right. So thank you so much. You can remove the mask so I can talk. Thank you so much, Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, Cabinet. We are so thrilled, on behalf of Pine Tree, to thank the entire board for all you do during a pandemic nonetheless, and everything that you guys do to help shape and drive our district. It is really impressive, all you do, and it's all volunteer work. And so please know, on behalf of us at Pine Tree, how much we appreciate... And I brought some really special second graders here. We have Zoe Evans and her sister Amelia, right? We have Callan Tiorella. And we have Declan Shea. And we have Logan Chalot. They are here to help us recognize Jamel Evans for his efforts on being on the board. So they have some special Pine Tree gifts for you, and if you guys want to help me out, you can all hand... Come on out, guys. So we have a lot of little gifts from Pine Tree, and we thank you for everything you've done. I think this is your first Board of Ed Appreciation night, right?
Yes, it is.
Very nice. I'm hoping... I'm hoping we're doing okay. In addition, Pine Tree, our family, has donated a wreath to Wreaths Across America, as all the buildings have. We have donated our wreath in honor of Eugene Sullivan, United States Navy. He was a soldier during Vietnam War, and he recently passed away sadly. And his family was so impressed with all the efforts of our school and specifically our Patriot Club, going to Stewart Airport to root on the veterans, going to DC on the Honor Flight, marching in parades, and doing all the wonderful things we do with the Valentine's Day card campaign that gets sent overseas. Eugene Sullivan's family donated a seat or a swing for our playground for our special needs students, and a very nice donation. And so, in honor of Eugene Sullivan, that is who our wreath is dedicated for. So thank you, Jamel, for everything you do, and thank you all board members for all you do for us. We really appreciate it. So on behalf of Mr. Martin and myself, congratulations to everybody. Thank you for all you do. Jamel, we got to come back for a picture. Yeah, stay here, guys. Stay there one second.
Thank you. And our next building is Central Valley Elementary, and once again, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Christine Arl, the principal.
Good evening. Once again, thank you all so much for all that you do for all of our families, our children, and our community. This evening, we would like to offer an extra thanks to Mrs. Dawn Taber. She was the board member who was randomly selected for us. And in addition to the swag, Mrs. Taber, we do also have a wreath of gratitude for you that's attached to the bag, but we hope you'll display it proudly somewhere. And our friends who are helping me today are Sahara Nichols and Sean Durante. Sean, Sahara, would you like to turn and hand the bag to Mrs. Taber? And we would like to also dedicate a wreath in honor of Charles Bakula, also known as Charlie, around the community. Charlie was a veteran in the US Air Force. He was also a member of the Orange County Commander of the American Legion. He was also a member of the Veteran Foreign Wars post 1573. He's the past president and Paul Harris Fellow of Monroe Woodbury Rotary. He was part of the Orange Chapter of Squire Counselors to America's Ball Business Mentor, and he has so many other accomplishments, but to us in the community, he's probably known for the work that he does with the Rotary to help all of our families in need have warm winter clothing and coats in the winter. And he's one of our volunteers that helps at breakfast with Santa and spends many hours talking and speaking with our families. So the wreath will be dedicated in his honor. Thank you for all that you do.
And our next school is the Middle School, and here representing the Middle School is Ms. Gina Dudgeon, the Assistant Principal, and Ms. Amanda Collins, also Assistant Principal.
Good evening. The Middle School would like to thank the Board of Education members, but specifically tonight, we'd like to thank Mr. Anthony Anderson for his service to our community. We are honoring him with a donation to Wreaths Across America. The veteran we chose to memorialize with this gift is Stephen M. Nicoli. Stephen was a veteran of the United States Army, serving in the Army's 82nd Airborne Division. He served his country from 1997 till 2000. Stephen was a longtime Orange County volunteer who dedicated himself to causes benefiting local military personnel and their families. Shortly after the events of 9/11, Stephen took it upon himself to establish an organization called Honoring American Troops, where he created and sent care packages to troops overseas. Stephen had an unparalleled love and passion for veterans, and this led him to found the Hudson Valley Honor Flight, a hub of the National Honor Flight Network. The mission of the Hudson Valley Honor Flight is to ensure that every World War II veteran has the opportunity to be honored for their service to our country. This program flies multiple times a year out of both Stewart and Westchester airports, transporting our veterans so that they may tour the very war monuments in Washington, DC that honor their service. To date, nearly 2,000 veterans have benefited from his work. In addition, Stephen was a member and commander of American Legion Post 158, and he had received the Lenny Rifkin Patriotic American Award. Both Stephen and his good work for our veterans will long be remembered in Orange County, and we are proud to honor him here tonight. Thank you for your service, Mr. Anderson.
The second person the Middle School would like to thank tonight for their service is Sergey Kaufman. In honor of him, we are honoring Major Paul Volkey tonight. Paul was not only a Monroe Woodbury graduate, but he was also a classmate of mine in high school. In high school, Paul was a member of the National Honor Society, participated in our interact club, and ran cross-country and winter track. After we graduated high school, Paul went on to attend and graduate from West Point. Paul spent 14 years in service to his country. During his time in the Army, Paul was awarded the Bronze Star for his bravery, a Purple Heart for injuries received in combat, and the Afghanistan Campaign Medal. Paul served two tours in Iraq and was on his second deployment in Afghanistan when he was killed there. He is survived by his wife Tracy, who was his high school sweetheart, and his two sons. Paul lived his entire life serving others. For this, we honor him tonight. Thank you.
Our final school this evening is the High School, and here representing the High School is the Principal, Mr. John Casti.
Thank you, Dr. Hasler. This evening, I have two members from our athletic club to present the high school portion of tonight's recognition. Ethan Myers and Moella Tetenardi. Ethan is the Treasurer, and Moella is the Director of Public Relations. Ethan?
Good evening. On behalf of the High School students and staff, we would like to thank you all for what you do for our district. We appreciate the many hours of hard work you put in to the support and success of us all.
Mr. Beeler and Mr. Israidi, we have purchased wreaths in your name to honor Colonel Christopher Holchak, retired, and Colonel Specialist Philip Rummenensky. During his distinguished 30-year military career, Colonel Holchak served in Germany, Bosnia, Croatia, Hungary, Kuwait, Iraq, and Liberia, having performed civil affairs, supported Army Joint Interagency at multinational levels. With orders to the Second Armored Cavalry Regiment in Germany in the 1980s, he served as a Civil Military Operations and Public Affairs Officer, dramatically boosting relations among diverse focus groups and initiating the application of Civil Military and Information Operations concepts. In 1993, he joined the 304th Civil Affairs Brigade and served a tour of duty as a Civil Affairs Plans Officer for the 21st Theater Army Area Command in Germany, where he helped plan and coordinate and execute numerous multinational civil-military logistic exercises, oversaw reserve component affairs integration, and contributed to campaign planning for upcoming operations in the Balkans. He then deployed in support of Operation Joint Endeavor with one of the first Civil Affairs Teams as a theater support teams, support teams, plans, and civil information officer. In 1998, Colonel Holchak assumed command of the 304th Civil Affairs Brigade Headquarters and Headquarters Company, developing and applying innovative methods and techniques to manage mobilization and deployment readiness, training and administration, and civil affairs support of theater-level joint interagency peace, humanitarian relief, and information operations in Europe, the Middle East, and Africa. He then deployed to the JNA and CIMIC Directorate of Headquarters KFOR as a Civil Military Cooperation Liaison Officer to UN Mission in Kosovo, spearheading NATO-UN civil-military cooperation there. Colonel Holchak recently collaborated with the High School to create a service fair.
On January 7th, 1968, during a combat operation four kilometers northwest of Lyke Key Airfield in Bindwang Province, SP4 Philip Rummenensky was killed by a shrapnel from a hostile booby trap. Mr. Rummenensky graduated from Monroe Woodbury High School in 1964. We also have a gift bag for you, Mr. Beeler and Mr. Israidi. Thank you for all you do for our school district and our community.
I think Mrs. McCleary needs a picture, and I think Mrs. Donahue also needs a picture.
Oh, okay.
Am I correct in that? Okay, so you have to come back up, and Mrs. Donahue, you also need to come back up because we didn't get a picture of you.
Got it.
So I need Mrs. Reagan and Mrs. Caldwell to come back up. Thank you. On behalf of the entire Monroe Woodbury community, thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the presentations. We really do appreciate it. We're going to take a brief 10-minute recess, and we will be back in session after that. and we will be back in session after that.
Get rid of Texas.
When you run out there and tell them, we've got to start.
[clears throat]
Oh, fine.
Yeah.
Have some of this.
I'm just gonna...
Um, I have presentation on goals.
Okay.
There we are. Oh. We do. Donna. Donna! We have a party. [laughter] [applause]
Good evening. We're returning to regular business. There was no board business that was conducted during our break. Moving on with our agenda, we are on item number nine, which is questions or comments from interested citizens. We will start this evening with Jaclyn Lanau, who will be speaking on her behalf about COVID school buildings. I will just remind as you come down to the podium, the podium is down here to my left. You will have three minutes to speak, at which time Ms. Vitucci will notify us that your time has expired. And please just remember that we will respond to your comments at our next board meeting in the month of December. Jaclyn Lanau, is she not here anymore? Okay. Cynthia Walsh, who is speaking on behalf of herself in regards to safety.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Walsh, and my daughter is a student in the Morrow Woodbury School District. I'm here to tell you about an incident that happened to my daughter last week. And this is why I'm bringing up the, um, about safety.
I'm sorry. Can I just ask that you speak into the microphone a little more? Because I'm having difficulty hearing you.
Sure.
Thank you.
During recess, my daughter and her two friends were eating lunch when two boys sat next to her. Both of the boys and the girls started telling each other to move to another table. One of the boys took my daughter's lunch bag and tried to run away with it. And the other boy poured all his lunch all over the girls' tables, and he left. A few minutes later, about five to six girls approached my daughter and her two friends. They started asking loudly on their faces if they believe in Black Lives Matter. My daughter did not respond, but kept eating. The group of girls kept yelling and asking them the question. My daughter's two friends felt intimidated and said yes. Since my daughter did not answer, they insisted and kept yelling at her. So my daughter said, "I believe all lives matter." Because of this answer, my daughter was being called a racist by the group of girls, while they were also chanting BLM, BLM. My daughter was so upset, she started tearing up and crying. The security guy then, then came and asked my daughter to go inside. This behavior is unacceptable. This is bullying and an act of racism towards my child. She's only 11 years old. I'm here to tell, to let the parents know what's going on in the school. This is one of three incidents that happened last week alone. I personally do not feel my daughter is saving the school. I also want to tell you that I don't blame the children about this incident. I do think the parents and the school have a lot to do with the kids' behavior. I can only comment in the school, but I know Morrow Woodbury is teaching equity and not equality. What do you guys think was going to happen? You're promoting books in the school from authors like Abraham X. Kendi, that instead of teaching kids that we should treat each other equally and with respect, he teaches about white privilege. Let me read a quote from Abraham X. Kendi. "The only remedy to racist discrimination is anti-racist discrimination. The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination." This is the type of mentality and belief that these authors have. In US schools, are giving our children to read. This, to me, is poison to our children. I also want to add that one of my daughter's teachers commented about an article that he read, and he was commenting on how nowadays, white people are privileged. This is coming from one of the teachers at the Morrow Woodbury. My family and I believe what Mother Luthor King said. "We judge people not by the color or the skin, but by the content of the character." I did hear back from the assistant principal about this incident, and I want to thank her for trying to rectify the situation. I hope the girls involved in this incident are held accountable for their actions. I also want to encourage the school to do a better job on bringing the kids together, analyze what you guys are teaching, and see if it's truly helping our children come together in unity, instead of teaching them to be divided. So do the right thing and look into that. I hope things can change in Morrow Woodbury. For now, I'm considering withdrawing my child and homeschooling her until I know and I feel that this, this school is safe again. I'm gonna... Thank you. I will just leave with a comment. I hope you guys can, um, next time, maybe tell us how can the school be safe for children?
Thank you. [applause] Our next speaker is Holly Moam. She is speaking in regards to the unrest within the school, and she is speaking on behalf of herself. Yes?
If your comments, if they were printed, we could just get a copy of them. Sometimes it's been a little bit hard to hear up here. And if, if you didn't mind sharing what you had written down, if you were reading from a, you know, your prepared notes, if you could share them with us, I'd be really appreciative.
Thank you. So any of the speakers this evening, if you would like, please go ahead, and you can email what you've said tonight. It is on video, but if you'd like, please have it written down, and you can email it to Ms. Vitucci, and she will make certain that it gets to all of us board members. Um, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Holly Moam. I'd like to also address the unrest our children face during the school hours. My daughter was a ghost for Halloween, and she wore her costume during recess with the rest of her friends. During recess, she was attacked by two separate groups of black children, about 10 minutes apart. In the second attack, four to five black boys cornered her against a fence, and one of them physically assaulted her, while the others called her the KKK and a white supremacist. It was all caught on school cameras. We made a police report. My daughter ended up with a neck injury. The police department handed the investigation over to Mr. Maciano, and I haven't heard back from him since I've reached out two times, since the investigation's been handed over to him. Her injuries were not severe enough for the police to do anything further about it. But I'm here tonight because my daughter's racial attack is not an isolated incident. As the parent before me said, there's been three other attacks on white children during school hours, and it's getting out of hand. And this is just in the last couple of weeks. This is becoming a commonplace during school hours. What's being done? How is this allowed to happen, the division? The division that's happening is unfolding on the school grounds. It's being recorded on camera. And I think the ramifications of the identity politics, the ramifications meaning the white children being attacked during recess and in the lunchroom, need to be played on repeat in the student, in the, in the teacher's lounge. They need to see what they're doing. They're not. They're not doing good. Our children are entering a war zone. My student, my, my daughter is an A student, and I hope that she stays that way. I hope that she keeps getting her As. It's become physical and dangerous to be in your school district if you're white. I'm going to close with, after leaving the police station after she made her victim's report, she said to me, "You know, Mom, I don't hate them. I don't hate them. I'm sad and I'm disappointed." She's 13. So I'm proud of her, and I hope that we can make change without losing federal money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Stels. She was, she's going to address the board in regards to CSE, and she's speaking on behalf of herself.
Hello. Good evening. Just going to get right down to it. Obviously, we don't have a lot of time. Shifting gears for a moment to a comment that a woman who spoke after me at a previous board meeting, who said something I thought deserved to be revisited. We actually didn't agree on most things, but she said something that really struck a chord with me, and I felt deserved to be acknowledged. What she said was, "Children of color look up, and they see someone who looks like them in a position of authority and influence, and it becomes an inspiration. It becomes attainable." She proceeded to say that we need more black teachers, more black people in positions of authority and influence, not only in our district, in our town, or our community, and in our country. And I can speak for myself and for a lot of the people that are sitting here today that we would all be in agreement with that. So it kind of begs the question, we agree on that, but how do we make that happen? When you look at that black people make up 13% of the US population, so the number of people in positions of authority and influence would correlate directly with that, which begs the question, how do we increase the black population in the country? And the reason I'm bringing this up is because of this whole white privilege, systemic racism narrative that's constantly being pushed in our school. Some teachers, not all, there's some amazing teachers, I say it all the time, a lot of very good teachers who have come to me and are in confidence, and they're very unhappy with the way things are going. With what happened to the two girls that spoke earlier and their children, there is an absolute out of control, spiraling out of control with the culture in the school. A school that I went to for most of my life, that most of my family went to, and it's really heartbreaking. So back to the original point, in that increasing the black population, if we want an equal, and I believe, I think a lot of us, an equal, for the type of representation, how do you increase the black population? What's a good way to do that? Perhaps they might revisit representing some of that in our health classes instead of, you know, the comprehensive sex... instead of, you know, the comprehensive sexuality education, which is all about condoms and sex and partners and everything that's much more graphic than most young children need to be exposed to. And certainly, from a school standpoint, for those of us who want it, great. Maybe make that an elective, instead of forcing it on everybody else who doesn't agree with that narrative either. But basically, looking back to what's the best way to increase the population? Have more representation. It directly correlates. What part of the program is devoted to encouraging healthy moral growth of the black population, or indigenous, or BIPOC population? What does the curriculum look like for that, to encourage that kind of growth? That doesn't exclude socioeconomics, cultural, or other issues that might be affecting those populations, because those deserve absolute attention. Some example of lessons plans would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jayesa Napolitano. She's speaking on SEL and school culture.
Good evening, board. It's Jayesa Napolitano, but don't worry.
Sorry.
It's been going on for years. It's fine. So I'm new to the district, and by new, I mean, my family moved here in 2018. We coordinated that so that my now 10-year-old could enter Pine Tree right on time, associate, assimilate, not be the new girl. So now she's in fifth grade, and she's thriving. We love it here. As you can see, I have a one-year-old running around, and it has allowed me to become more involved in the community, because now I'm not at work. But as you can see, it has its limitations, because if it weren't for my one-year-old, I'd be working, and maybe I could make more of these meetings. So I'm doing the best I can to join in all of this culture that's happening. There's so many changes, not only in the school district, but in society in general. So I'm trying to, I'm playing catch-up. I've joined the leadership committee at Pine Tree. I'm looking forward to joining when also she becomes a middle-schooler. I'm on the Equity Task Force, so I'm trying to be involved, and I have some points to say, some observations. So as a mother, I have primary functions. Everything else is secondary. My primary function is to do the best that I can at home with my children and my husband. I support my husband so he can continue to feel supported and work 80 hours a week so that I don't have to, and I'm doing the best I can with my children to facilitate your job when they're in school. In my opinion, institutions like education have a primary function, and that is education. That's what you go to school for. That's what you get your master's degrees in. Social workers go to school and get their master's degrees in that. And psychologists go to school and get their master's degrees in those. And those are all professionals that deserve respect. So I find it a little conflicting that we're putting so much on our teachers, because what's happening is that now we're overwhelming these education experts with social-emotional learning and psychology and things like that. So I've seen our grades, and just a quick side note, have we reviewed, because this is one of the first meet, this is my second meeting, have we reviewed the report card of like proficiency and things like that in our grades? Not because I'm gonna get into it, just because I have it here. I don't want to go into something if you guys have already revisited that. I have 20, 19, 20, 20 in front of me. Have you guys reviewed that, like you did the budget? Maybe you have?
Yes, and that's typically a presentation that Dr. Hassler gives us at some point during the school year.
Okay. So I'm looking over it, just to let you know, and we're at about equal. We have 30 below, 30 proficient, and 30 average, something like that. So it does get into, though, if we're gonna talk about race, the inequalities in that, and they do reflect that Hispanics and blacks have lower than that. And I'm pleased just going to finish up. One more thought.
Thank you.
One more thought. If we're gonna have brave conversations, it's one of the, the topics going around now, those brave conversations are conversations. It's not us parents stand here month to month and speak, and then there's not a formal response. So I'm happy to submit my questions. I became involved because in July, there were 30 questions. I didn't read the questions, but I do know that they have not been formally answered.
I answered that last month, that our, I read our response to that.
How? I have not seen it.
Okay. Our, our meetings are on video, so I did read a response to that, so you can go back to look at it. If you have any further questions for this evening, you're welcome to email them to Ms. Vitucci, and she will let them, let, give them to all of us as a board. And then we will collectively decide whether or not we are responding to them. Some of them are usually responded to by the superintendent, and then we have decided that, which I will reiterate here, that we were not responding to those 30 questions that were given to us over the summer.
Then that's not a conversation. That's not a conversation. If we're gonna tout brave conversations, they need to be answered.
With all due respect, we had a three-hour conversation with many of you that are sitting in this audience. Okay?
I'm sorry, I was not there.
Thank you.
I was not there. I'm not associated, Mrs. McCleary, I'm not associated with any groups. I'm just here. I came a long way with a one-year-old to, to be here, just to tell you, a brave conversation is a conversation. In order to prevent us, from me, from coming back, and you guys hearing, you guys have better things to do, other things to move on to. Instead of hearing the same questions over and over, if somebody asks you a question and you have a formal response, then it's easier for you to say, "Please refer to such-and-such date and such-and-such document."
If you have specific questions this evening that are not the questions that were from the 30 questions previously, feel free to email them to Ms. Vitucci, and she will give them to all of us.
Thank you, I'm happy to. I'm here just to say, just to point out, like I said, an observation. I'm new to being a participant. That's my observation, to just move things easier for you guys and easier for us.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Tom Lapola on Choose Love.
Good evening. I'll be quick. Tom Lapola, very longtime resident. All my children graduated from the school. So a general question on a specific program here in Monroe Woodbury, Choose Love. And although it's the brand name, but the brand is the product. So can the owner of that brand explain to the board and the taxpayer who defines love? And please, I will not, nor should the board, or will the Monroe Woodbury taxpayer accept "love is love" or any other cliche, because that's relativistic and not consistent with objective truth, which has always been the gold standard for a well-rounded education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen Colapi, who will be speaking on morals.
Good evening. I'd like to start as well by saying that I'm aware there are many great teachers in the school district, board members, administration as well. So I, when I say Monroe Woodbury, I'm not meaning everybody to take this personally. What I'm speaking on tonight is basically not just as a parent, as a mom, but more so as a religious education teacher in Monroe. I've been doing this for years, so we've been sharing students, so to speak, all over the age ranges and such. But I have a problem, a big problem lately in my classroom. I teach for about an hour and a half a week. My students are with you guys for about 40 hours a week. They're here for an education, and that's what they should be getting. That's it. The rush be left to the parents. The parents can decide where they want their kids to learn their morals, where they want them, and what they want them to learn psychologically and morally. That shouldn't be here. It doesn't have any place here, and it's really messing with my students. And on their behalf, I wanted to bring up a few things. As some of the other mothers said, they don't feel safe here lately. They feel a lot of hatred, a lot of division. If they speak up for something morally that they think is right, they're now haters. It's just a bad scene going on, and I don't like hearing from my students or their parents that this is going on. And I, I see it from other parents as well. You know, I was just thinking, if I was in my classroom teaching math and science while their, the parents are paying for them to learn morals, I'd get in trouble. These parents would be speaking up going, "You're supposed to be teaching faith and morals. Why aren't you?" Leave it to that. Here, stick with the subject, stick with education. That's all, as taxpayers, we want you to do. There's too much moral stuff, there's too much psychological stuff lately, and it's damaging to the children. And there are some teachers, as Janet mentioned, who have come to us, who are feeling the same way. It's, it's not a good atmosphere lately. And just briefly, I want to mention about the Veterans Day. I was happy to see all these children saying, you know, the pledge and singing and being patriotic this evening, but that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that there were four children in one homeroom in one week that decided that they were the opposite gender. And that doesn't, to me, sound like a child who's having an issue or having some gender confusion or something and needs some help. It sounds like, hey, this is the cool thing to do right now. And these same four children also are sitting down for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm wearing this coat for a reason. My father would be rolling in his grave to hear the children, who he came from Ireland and became, he was drafted and was in the army before he was even a citizen, and how many others fought for our country and for our freedoms. And here these kids are sitting down for the Pledge of Allegi, excuse me, for the Pledge of Allegiance? That's, that's awful. Tonight, I was happy to hear you say, "Please stand." These kids have to be told, "Stand up." These people fought for this country. They fought for your freedoms, and you think you can just sit down and do what you want? I don't think so. Something's gone wrong. I was in school, that's not how we were raised. Please stick to education. Thank you.
The next speaker is Matthew LaFace. He'll be speaking about racism in schools on behalf of himself.
Good evening. I was gonna give you his hypotheticals, but if you're telling me you can't answer questions till December, I'm just gonna come out and tell you what happened. Last year, during remote learning, a teacher in the middle school was telling children about the color of their skin matters, not to use specific items on the computer because of the color of it. And after the principal was notified, the buck stopped there. He knew 100% that this actually happened. Credibility was 100% accurate, and that was it. I'll tell you in detail, on the Google Classrooms, there's options on the computer to use. I'm sure yous might be familiar with it. There's a little hand there that comes up. If the kids have a question, they press it, the hand comes up and gives a wave, right? So the teacher knows that the kids might have a question. She specifically told the students not to use that option because the color of the hand was white, just like every other option that's on the Google Classroom, whether it was the pointer, the cursor, or anything else. That just happened to be the color. The kids probably could even change it if they wanted to. Might have been an option. But for the next three days, she kept saying this, until the students started telling the teacher, "Get over it. It's just a hand. Please stop. You're causing problems in the class." This is coming from the students in text messages to the teacher. Her name is Mrs. Wickholm, in the middle school.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, we're not going to address if you-
Well, I just did.
If you have a personnel issue-
I just did. It's not a personal issue.
And to the superintendent.
That's who it was.
Thank you.
Elsie was notified, and so was the middle school principal. He knew 100% that that was true, and he spoke to her about it. And then he came back to me on a phone conversation and had said, "That's not the issue, that didn't happen." And I said, "Do I need to get the students involved and the parents involved who know about this?"
Okay, I'm going to ask you again that you-
Ask me. You can ask me as much as you want, and I'm gonna respectfully decline.
Okay, well, your time is up for speaking.
It's not up.
Sir, we're not gonna continue the conversation any longer.
After I explained to him-
The superintendent is asking that you reach out to her.
After I explained to him that I will get the students and the other parents involved-
Sir.
He then went back to the teacher, and the next day, she told the students it was okay to use the option.
You're gonna be asked to be removed, sir.
And we're gonna ask for Mrs. Wickholm to be removed.
Okay, thank you. Have a great night.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much this evening. That will conclude public speaking. Are there any follow-ups to comments? Please, I do not want to have to have everybody removed. Thank you. Is there any updates? Sir, Frank, please, Mr. Skolante, so that we can continue the meeting. Thank you. Thank you. Is there any update on questions or comments from previous meeting?
At our last board meeting, we did have a parent who asked about the face mandate and the, the-
No, sir, thank you. The public comment portion is, the public comment portion of the meeting has concluded. We are moving on with the agenda.
We don't need to.
That is absolutely not the case. Thank you. The public comment portion of this meeting, I will adjourn the entire meeting. So the public portion of this meeting has concluded. Thank you.
Enough. Enough.
We're gonna take a brief recess.